Okay, we're going to call the Santa Barbara City Council Meeting of February 3rd, 2009 to order. Will you please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Council Financing Authority Member Falcone, Francisco, Horton, Haves, Schneider, Williams, Mayor Chair Bloom. Item 1, Proclamation declaring February 2009 as Black History Month.
Will you please come up here? This is good. I've seen you doing the rounds today. I was watching the Board of Supervisors this morning, but that's good. It's a good thing because it's a very important month. And we have flags on State Street and everything else. That's good. So Cliff, I have numerous proclamations. I guess Susan Young right here. And so I'll read one, but then hand out the others if you don't mind. I'm not going to read them over and over. Proclamation, Second Annual Endowment for Youth Committee, Black History Month. Black History Month celebrates and embodies the African-American culture in all its beauty, its hopes, its dreams, and its heritage and pride of its existence. In remembering, African-Americans seek to understand their past in relationship to their heritage. In believing in themselves, they can make a difference, and in hoping they can gain courage for the future. Jazz, swing, gospel, prose, cultural festivals, and advancements in education have always been and continue to be integral parts that embody the African-American experience. The Brotherhood of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Maritime Museum provide a rich and diverse presentation of art, music, dance, speech, and exhibits that enrich and provide for a deeper understanding of the arts. So I, Marty Bloom, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, I hereby proclaim as February 2009 as Black History Month. And I urge all the residents of Santa Barbara to celebrate the unity of Santa Barbara by attending and participating in planned events and activities throughout the city, which we're going to hear about right now. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor Bloom. And on behalf of the Endowment for Youth Committee, I want to thank the mayor and the members of the council for not only your support of this event, but your support over the years for the endowment. You know, the Endowment for Youth Committee works toward helping young people, especially young people of color, but help to educate them and to help them grow. And certainly, the celebration of Black History Month is an opportunity to do that. When we think of Black History Month, I don't necessarily think of it just as a month of celebrating a particular race or culture, but more of a celebration or recognition of individuals who happen to be of a particular race or culture, but that have done things that help in all of us. And when we think about that individually, then we see how it helps all of us as individuals. You think about Grover Washington Jr., who invented the peanut butter. You know peanut butter's getting a bad rap right now. But when it's not, we enjoy it.
I still love peanut butter, so.
Or Louis Lattimore, who was the inventor of the carbon filament that gives us the light bulb. Or perhaps Garrett Morgan, who not only invented the gas mac, but the first traffic light. All of these things help all of us, no matter what race, creed, or culture. So when you embrace that, then it's easier to embrace the celebration of Black History Month. So the endowment welcomes you, along with its presenters, the Inner Light Gospel Choir, Santa Barbara City College, the Brotherhood of Santa Barbara, the County of Santa Barbara Arts Commission, and some of our other major sponsors, such as Hutton and Monroe, and a host of other sponsors, to participate in some of the events that we have planned for this month. We encourage people to go to our website, which is EYCBLACKHISTORYMONTH.COM. That's EYCBLACKHISTORYMONTH.COM, to learn about more of the events that are going to happen. And we'll have a lot of things spread out throughout the month, so that you'll know what to come to. Before, I call up Craig Smith, who's one of the Endowment for Youth Committee members, and also Shay Alexander. I also wanted to recognize our executive director, Justin Wilkins, who alone with his staff has made all of this possible. And of course, as always, Cliff Lambert, who's been kind of the voice behind EYC, but also has been a major role in playing this. So again, on behalf of the Endowment for Youth Committee, thank you again for recognizing this. And I'll call up Craig.
I think Susan was a little nervous, because I'm either going to give the first history lesson of Black History Month, or we're going to have the first debate about Black History Month. I think it was George Washington Carver. You said Grover Washington Jr. The great jazz saxophone player.
My bad. That's why we have it suited to the education. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm done. Madam Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council, on behalf of the directors of the Endowment for Youth Committee, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak about our second annual Black History Month celebration in the city of Santa Barbara. Given the relatively small size of the African-American population in this community, some might question, why observe Black History Month in Santa Barbara? After all, do they celebrate old Spanish days in Dublin, Danish days in Buenos Aires, or Mardi Gras in Anchorage? But the fact is that the world is a more diverse place, and it's also becoming a smaller world. Diversity is not only commonplace in schools and in our workplaces, diversity has now come to the Thanksgiving Day table for many families. And of course, few of us would have dared to dream one year ago what has now come to pass, the election of our first African-American president. It's a reminder that history isn't something that is to be learned by visiting a museum or by turning the pages of a dusty old book. Rather, history is being played out in front of our eyes each and every day, and that we are not merely observers of history, but rather are participants in it. So, on behalf of the Endowment for Youth Committee, I would like to invite the community of Santa Barbara to join us in the celebration of Black History Month. After all, we are making history.
Yes, we'll see if some of the other ones speak. And we're hoping that Shay Alexander will make it to do a presentation for you. Okay.
We're going to do just a tiny bit of Free at Last, which is what Martin Luther King mentions at the end of his speech. And Terry's going to start us off.
(Singing) Free at last, free at last. I thank God I'm free at last, free at last, free at last. I thank God I'm free at last.
Thank you.
I don't want to take up a lot of time, but Thursday night is First Thursday. There'll be a lot of events related to Black History Month, and you'll have lots of opportunity to see African-American culture at a lot of the different events. And there's a lot going on, so come on out. Rain or shine.
Rain or shine. This has been a great, or I should say, last month has been a great month. This month is going to be equally as great with all the activities that are planned around the city for Black History Month. I would like to give a thank you to the Endowment for Youth Committee, which makes all of this possible for us. My name is Bill Spencer. I'm the president of the Brotherhood. And without EYC, a lot of these things would not happen so easily. And so thank you very much, EYC, for the work that you've done literally behind the scenes to make this happen. The Brotherhood is having an event on Saturday, February 14th, which is Valentine's Day. So we'd like you to bring your heart with you. We're having an event, and it's a two-part thing. And last year, I believe, about 1,000 people rolled through on the first side. And that is, with the Maritime Museum, we have events out in front of the Maritime Museum, starting at 11:00 and running until 4:00. They are children-friendly, they are educational, and it's free. So we'd like to inform the community about that on February 14th, starting at 11:00. If you'd like to see the times in specific, you can go to our website, which is SBBrotherhood.org, and get the details of that. But mostly, I would like to say thank you to both the county and the city of Santa Barbara. Thank you, Mayor Bloom, for your endorsement of something that's close to our hearts. Yes, I've been given that same question of, gee, how many of there are you? Well, it's 1.6%. And if it was you, you'd be offended at that question, because it's bigger than that. I think one of the things I like to say is, we're not, and I think you'll understand this, we're not free until we're all free, until we all can walk equally as men and women in our communities and in the country. And that is what the Brotherhood is trying to do. We got together as just a group of black guys getting together, because we like to hang out together. But it's turned into something else. It's turned into a nonprofit organization. It's turned into things that we do in the community and put on functions like we've done in the past. During the evening on February 14th, there'll be an African cultural heritage banquet that we give. That starts at 7:00 and ends at 11:30. There's a $25 charge on that. But we'll have some guest speakers. One who has interviewed significant people throughout the world, including the Dalai Lama. Another person we'll have there doing dance demonstrations, and we'll also have additional speakers there that evening. So, you know, I would like to say thank you very, very much for helping us out with this. Even though we're a small percentage of the population, we have mighty big hearts. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, can I just say something about the 1.6%? Because this question comes up to me often too, but I just want to say that in terms of participation and work in this community, whether that's work as city staffers, or work as activists trying to make the community better, or business owners, or artists in the community, that African-Americans do a whole lot more than 1.6% of the heavy lifting. So out of proportion to the population level is how much activity and how much community service goes on from the African-American community in Santa Barbara.
And on that note, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 2, Employee Recognition Service Award Pins.
We have Susan Thompson. Come on up. You've got some fans out here too, I think. This is good. Let me give you your pin. And let me read this, and then you can have some time for some words. Susan Thompson began her career with the city of Santa Barbara on February 5th, 1979. She was hired through the CETA program as a maintenance worker one for the harbor. In 1980, she transferred laterally to Water Resources and was quickly promoted to plant operator trainee at the William B. Cater Water Treatment Plant. Susan had earned her laboratory technician grade one, water distribution operator grade one, and water treatment plant operator grade three certifications within two years, and had been promoted to a water treatment plant operator two. In addition to her duties at Cater, Susan served as an operator at the Sheffield Filtration Plant and at the Ortega Well Treatment Plant. Susan was promoted to water treatment supervisor in 1991. She earned her water treatment operator grade five certificate in 1994, and in 1998, Susan was promoted to her current position, water treatment superintendent. Susan has overseen many large capital improvement projects for water resources, including the Cater Water Treatment Plant Improvements Project and the Sheffield Water Quality Project. She's received many acknowledgements for her outstanding job performance over the years, including employee of the month. Susan is an accomplished musician and a budding songwriter. This is very good. She and her partner April reside in Carpinteria with her dog Murphy and cat Shelby. Susan, you've been a dedicated and valuable employee of the city of Santa Barbara, and it's an honor to recognize you for 30 years of service to our city, as well as your many accomplishments. On behalf of the city council and your fellow citizens, thank you and congratulations. Thank you. You're going to get a standing ovation.
I just, it's like I won an Oscar or something. I don't know. I had to pull this out. Thank you, Mayor Bloom. Is it Bloom or Bloom? Bloom, sorry. Okay. It's hard to believe it's been 30 years. Don Sathery was the harbor master at the time, and he hired me as a maintenance worker. But my career truly started in 1980, when I transferred to the water department and met John Henry. I don't know how many might remember John, but he was my mentor and my teacher. And I finally knew what I wanted to be when I grew up, when I met him. So although some would say that hasn't happened yet, I feel very lucky to be one of the few who can say I truly like my job, and I'm grateful for the people who have helped me along the way. So thank you.
Well, thank you. We've got a couple people, I've got a couple people who'd like to speak about Susan. Tom Mosby and Charles Hamilton. Mosby?
Mosby.
Mosby.
Like a Y.
That's an S. I know. No, it's okay. I usually can read. Anyway.
My name's Tom Mosby. I'm working with the Montecito Water District. And thank you so much, council members, for allowing us to be here and recognizing Susan Thompson. I've known Susan since about, oh, 1991, and had the pleasure of working with her and having her assist Montecito Water. She has actually produced somewhere between 60 and 70% of all the water we use annually since I've known her, and the water has always been of the highest quality. Susan's assisted work with Montecito Water in many different venues, and even my whole treatment staff is here today to acknowledge Susan and her 30-year history. Susan and I have had some time where we've spoken about retiring, but now with the economic times the way they are, Susan, another five years. So anyway, I do wish to let the council know that Susan is the unsung hero, and we are just so pleased that she's continuing her service for at least another five years and that.
And maybe more.
And that we can always rely on her to help us out when in time of need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mosby. And Charles?
Yes, I've also known Susan, not as long, since 1995. Susan lives in Carpinteria Valley and has always been reliable, always dependable, always available for all inquiries. As you know, Carpinteria Valley Water District and Montecito Water District are partners with you for the Cater Treatment Plant in a very big way, and she's been part of the success story and will continue for as long as her influence carries on, which it will. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming. Anyway, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Armstrong.
Yes, Madam Mayor. In addition to Susan, this month, we're recognizing seven other employees with another 140 years of service with the city. And I want to read their names into the record. Victor Ayala, who's an electrician in Public Works. Barbara Shelton, who's a project planner in community development. They both have 10 years. With 20 years, Joe Brown, who's a senior tree trimmer in Parks and Rec. Junior Valdez, who's a fire engineer. And Bernie Pejo, who's also a fire engineer. And then in addition to Susan, we have two other employees with 30 years who weren't able to be here today. Jennifer Keenan, who's an office specialist too in fire. And Antonio Velazquez, who's a community services supervisor in Parks and Rec.
Okay, thank you so much, and thanks to all the employees this month. They're being honored, and we really appreciate your service. Thank you. Okay. So change this to the agenda?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Public comment, we have quite a few people.
Wait a minute.
I know, they don't want us to stick around for a public comment. Oh, well. Now, come on. I don't blame them. It's really great that so many people could come out for her. It's nice. Isn't it? She's good.
What I want to know is, why weren't they here for revision? Except for 1.62.
They were watching it on TV.
They trust you. That's why. Why aren't they here for the revision of the purchasing code? Because they trust you. There it is. Okay, we have public comment. Tony Vasallo, and I think I'm going to mispronounce your name, so sorry.
Vasallo.
Vasallo.
Yes.
That was cool.
Thank you.
Followed by Lazarus.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, I am Tony Vasallo, and my wife Caroline and I live on Brinkerhoff Avenue. With all this fanfare, I hope I'm not going to throw water on the fire here.
Oh, no, no.
Many of our residents, together with the city's Neighborhood Improvement Task Force, have been meeting recently. And the primary aim of our meetings has been to, and this is the lower west side neighborhood area, the primary aim is to make our neighborhoods safer. Make our neighborhoods safer. Many of our neighbors recently headed off the location of a medical cannabis dispensary in our neighborhood. And recently, another was stopped because the building owner on Coda Street refused to lease to the interested party. Because of these cases, and we've reviewed the city's ordinance criteria for locating these dispensaries. And it was pretty clear to us that because of the escalating safety issues in the lower area, west side area, that really our neighborhood doesn't and shouldn't any longer qualify for these dispensaries. As neighbors, we wanted you to know that petitions are circulating now. And basically, what we're asking the city council is that the area downtown, below Canyon Perdido, be removed from the allowable area downtown for permitted cannabis dispensaries. Our neighborhood petition was put together reasonably carefully. It's not in any way opposed to dispensaries. The petition opposes dispensaries located downtown below Canyon Perdido. This because of escalating safety issues. We have a fledgling neighborhood group, and it's a fun group. It's very much a cross-section of the neighborhood in the lower west side. And we are also getting support from businesses on Chapala. And next, we're going to State Street for support from businesses from State Street. And we have phone calls into the nonprofit groups in our area as well.
Okay.
We're trying our best to create a safer, more stable downtown neighborhood. And we are one of the much-desired walkable neighborhoods that you're proposing in Plan Santa Barbara, but people won't walk, especially at night, if they don't feel safe. So respectfully, please help us with our issue of removing our area below Canyon Perdido from that area allowed for cannabis. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Lazarus will be followed by Gert Walton.
Hi, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, City Council. Yeah, I'm here to talk about this, you know, the legalities of fraud. And, you know, you have the Rescue Mission, you have the Homeless Shelter, and I know you support the Homeless Shelter. I'm not sure what you do at the Rescue Mission. I think that's more of a religiously oppressive organization who go about, and they're talking about, well, those homeless people, of course I fit into that category, don't need any assistance, we'll give it to them. They've been doing that for 15 years. I've received absolutely nothing from them. I want you to know, I do not approve of them soliciting any funds for me. That would be like me soliciting for you, for your campaign donations. Can I do that? I don't think so. That would be illegal, wouldn't it? Huh. But see, when you're homeless, I guess, you know, these laws don't really protect you, do they? Huh, why is that? Are we less than human? You know, here we're just talking about freedom and diversity, you know. Well, I guess, you know, certain people might be free. I don't know. I'm not. I've been trying to leave this country for four years. Ask Lois Calves. Of course, you know, we re-elected her because she doesn't really believe in freedom. I don't think she believes in the Constitution of the United States of America. But yet, that's who we want to represent this district. Well, we have a new senator now. I'm going to go talk to him. And we got to go talk to the judges, and it's all going to go to court. You know, what we're going to talk about is what legal, you know, what evidence is supported by fact. And that's what we're going to get down to. I'm tired of gossip rumors and religious oppression controlling my life. And, you know, just on a final note, here's something you can believe. There was never a free country a man couldn't leave. Thank you. Have a good day.
Gert Walton, followed by Mr. Pennington.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Gert Walter. I'm a private citizen, and I came really to pray for you for the very important and very difficult decisions you have ahead in determining the budget. But before I do that, I wanted to commend you for something, something that I think is very important and probably often overlooked. And that is, I want to commend you for your ears. I think you've all got very beautiful ears. And what I mean by that is you listen. You listen really well. And I think that's very important. And the times that I've been here to witness council meetings, I've noticed you listen very intently to everybody that comes up to speak to you and address you. I think that's really commendable. You don't just yawn or write notes, but you do listen. Thank you for that. I think that's very important, because in the time I've spent working with people of disadvantage, people that are marginalized, that people that are without homes, often they're in that situation because they've been traumatized, because they've experienced trauma either physically, emotionally, financially, medically, or whatever. And they feel disadvantaged. They feel like they have no voice, and it's very important for them to speak, to be heard, to tell their story. That's part of the healing process. And that's the hope that they have for growing out of their disadvantaged situation. And I thank you very much for that. I think that's extremely important. So now, let me pray for you. Lord, I lift up the members of the City Council, and I just ask your special wisdom for them as they listen to all the people with different ideas and issues that come before them. I pray that you'd give them the wisdom to decide which of those ideas and issues have merit that they can act on and which don't. That as they ponder the issues related to the budget, that, Lord, they'd have your wisdom to decide which things to spend money on and which not, that they might do the greatest amount of good for the maximum number of citizens in this area with the limited resources they have. In God's name, amen.
Thank you. Mr. Pennington will be followed by Kate Smith.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Mr. Pennington, SOS Advocacy Group. I heard a good presentation by the Brotherhood. My issue today is, we, the people of Santa Barbara, are in lack of the double NCP, the ACLU enablersmen, oversight on how this city is run, how it's governed. We need some accountability and some dialogue with the people in charge of the city. I'm a business owner in this town. I pay taxes like everybody else, hopefully. You know, I know we're in hard times. I know the city is overspent on the budget. But what I don't know is where the money's going. I don't know which agencies are going over the budget. I don't know. But I'm forced to pay taxes anyways. We, the people, entrusted you with our monies to spend and to do as the city sees fit in our best interest. But with no oversight and no accountability, we don't know what you're doing. All we know is that we're in debt and our taxes are rising. I would be more than happy to listen to... I would be more than happy to listen to any agency out there that says, you know, like the waterfront department, or the Parks and Rec, you know, if they could admit for their part of going over the budget with the spending. I mean, at least it tells the constituents of this city, you know, we've overspent, but at least we're telling you where we're overspending, we're apologizing for that, and now we can, like, fix it. Because this government needs a lot of fixing. I had a nice little speech, you know, about truth, you know, but I'm not into all that right now. I do believe that if you carry a lie long enough, it takes a lot of work to keep it alive. So I would say the only way that we can, you know, even out the score is kinda like throw some truth in there and some accountability and some oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate Smith. I don't think Shay's here. Oh, yes, you are, good. You'll follow. And then the last speaker will be Roger Schluter.
Mayor Bloom and the Santa Barbara City Council, my name is Kate Smith. God bless America. On inauguration day, January 20th, Larry Nimmer and the Teach Peace Foundation sponsored Dance for Peace Day and asked that we dance and send in the videos. Unfortunately, the Board of Supervisors and the City Council were not meeting that day. I was going to dance the hokey pokey. So today, I am combining the hokey pokey with the exposure of wrongdoing in the Santa Barbara School District. At three-minute increments, learning of what happened to me, which caused post-traumatic stress disorder, will take about a year. I was illegally disqualified from the school board ballot because of a boundary line dispute, and now boundary lines are taking center stage in the basic aid quest of the school district. The boundary line had already been adjudicated. It was already decided. I am in the Santa Barbara School District. I spent $1.5 million defending myself against other illegal school district activities. My father does not believe that a school district would lie, cheat, and steal. And my father is 93, he's in the hospital today. So I'm taking my right hand in and out, shaking it all about. I have the right to bear arms. I'm now going to show you the gun that the school district said I threatened them with, and they proceeded to arrest me four times falsely, and they got restraining orders against me on perjured declarations. Please do not be afraid. This is the handgun they said that I used. I'm a stand-up comedian, I have been seen across the United States doing this, which is called my shtick.
Kate, you need to finish up, please.
At Roosevelt School, I did this, which I've been known to do for 20 years of performance. Get me a gun! That's the gun. It's in court testimony. That's the gun that they said I threatened them with. Do you understand?
He...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco. Thank you.
Shay Jones, followed by Roger Schluter. Hi Shay. You missed all those other people, but that's okay, you missed some good singing, too.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but that's okay, we're happy you made it.
Okay, well, I'm a student at Cal State Northridge, so I got out of class, I had to go, oh, thanks.
You've got a fellow person.
I had a group presentation I couldn't miss.
No, no, I didn't want you to, we're really glad you're here.
Okay, well, I just, I have an original piece to share with you this year.
Okay.
It's called Roots, on behalf of Black History Month.
Thank you.
So, not gonna drive or nothing. It's all about roots, once you get down to the core, let's fortify our lives so we can withstand more. It's all about roots, once you get down to the core, let's fortify our lives so we can withstand more. See, I'm more than a clicking of a tongue, more than the beating of a drum, more than the swinging of the hips, more than the fullness of lips. I spread across a thousand islands with more flavor than the dressing. I am the ebony. I hold more melanin. I was at cotton picking, cocoa getting, sugarcane splitting, workforce they yearn for, however, no man is captured unless he binds himself to the bondage that traps him. I broke free. I broke free with my many inventions, I broke free with my cultural traditions, I broke free with my children's ambition, even when they wanted me to enslave my cognition. I told them, not me. Like Haiti. Broke free, raised hell like Hades. See, the African diaspora will be portrayed poorer until they realize the wealth lies inside. Now, don't believe the lies. I'm great beyond measure. Go ask Lucy, I am the beginning, the ninth wonder and the ninth inning. No matter how his story tries to word it, I know better. Aside from any failures, I'm great beyond measure. See, it's all about roots, once you get down to the core, let's fortify our lives so we can withstand more. It's all about roots, once you get down to the core, let's fortify our lives so we can withstand more.
Thank you very much. Did you write that?
Watch out, Saul Williams. Um, no, yeah, I did write it.
That's wonderful.
I'm a spoken word artist, so.
You're very good, thank you.
Thank you.
You wrote that, is that what I hear? Yeah, that's what he just said, yeah, that's wonderful.
You have great presence, keep it up.
Thank you.
We need another poet laureate maybe someday, huh? No, thank you very much.
We've got a real...
Very wonderful, I know we've...
Applications are out.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you coming and doing that for us. Mr. Schluter, can you do that? That's not right, is it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for having me follow that act.
No problem.
I think we could do, we could just say, public comment has to be done in rhyme and verse.
Rhyme, yeah. Yeah, that's good.
Roses are red, violets are blue.
No, that's about it, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm here and so are you.
Go ahead. Yeah, that's very impressive, go ahead.
My name's Roger Schluter, I'm the president of the Humanness Society here in Santa Barbara. My organization in collabora, oh, by the way, and I'm also a member of the Creeks Advisory Committee, and my presentation here is completely divorced from that activity, as I am required to say. My organization in collaboration with the Museum of, the Santa Barbara Museum of Natural History, are sponsoring Darwin Week, which is February 8th through 14th, in which we're celebrating Darwin's 200th birthday and his 150th publication of On the Origin of Species. We're having a series of events, bringing people in from around the country to talk, in fact, Charles Darwin himself is here.
Wow.
Somewhat impersonated, opening the events on Sunday. We're reproducing the debate on Monday, we're having a discussion of teaching evolution on Tuesday. The museum is having their scientists talk about their work on Friday, or on Thursday. And on Saturday, in our marquee event, we're having Judge Jones, who was the judge in the Dover trial, here with Pulitzer Prize-winning author Ed Hume to talk about judicial independence. So the sharks among you would really enjoy that. It should be an excellent week.
Just a moment here.
With some very, very good events. I'm here to pick up the proclamation from Debbie, and I have a flyer for you that you can read during dull parts of this presentation. There's one for everybody on the other side of the firewall, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. And if people want to know about it, where can they find out? Do they go to the Natural History Museum website?
SBhumanness.org.
Humanist, okay.
Or SBnature.org. That's our website and their website.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. There we go, there. Report from the Ordinance Committee, Mr. Williams? Oh, we need to do some consent calendar, I just skipped over it, wasn't that funny? Nobody noticed, yes, you did, you noticed right away. Go ahead and read, I think you have one to read? Oh, you don't have any, okay. Anybody want to take anything off the consent calendar?
Move consent.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Williams, Ordinance Committee.
The Ordinance Committee today met at 1:05 in the council chambers to look at revisions to the city's purchasing code, about several different changes that they're looking at, mainly cleanup language or addressing issues that Mr. Hornig sees that are recurrent when purchasing issues come up over and over. And they will include such things as more formal procedures for disbarment if a contractor isn't doing good work or other things. So it was, of course, attended by mobs of folks.
I watched it.
There was, I think, exactly one person...
I was here for five minutes.
Yes. And it will be coming to council shortly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, let's go on to item 10, sorry.
Introduction of Ordinance for 2008 to 2010 General Unit Memorandum of Understanding, including Recommendation A that Council ratify the Memorandum of Understanding between the city and the Santa Barbara City Employees Association, Local 620 Service Employees International Union, for the period of October 1, 2008, through September 30, 2010, by introduction and subsequent adoption of, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara City Employees Association General Unit.
Okay, Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members, I'm Kristy Schmidt, the Employee Relations Manager, and I'm happy to present a new two-year labor agreement with our largest bargaining unit, the General Employees Bargaining Unit. This agreement we've reached on December 23rd, within the parameters provided by the City Council, and covers 500 of our employees. The bargaining unit membership has ratified this agreement, so the final step in making the agreement final is for you to ratify through this action. The labor agreement in the first year provides salary increases of 2.5% effective October 2008, and benefit increases of approximately 1.5% which includes a $50 per month increase to the city's contribution toward family medical insurance. Employees will also receive a new holiday for the Cesar Chavez Birthday. This will be celebrated on March 31st, which is the same day it's celebrated by the state offices. This year, the holiday will fall on a Tuesday, so part of our recommendation is that you cancel the council meeting for this year's March 31st meeting. In the second year, there will be a minimum salary increase of 1.5% with a maximum of 4.5% based on a CPI formula that's detailed in your packet. In addition, the agreement provides for 1/2% in benefits, which includes another $50 per month toward the city contribution to family medical. As is customary with the general unit, we are also recommending that you extend the same salary and benefit increases to our 42 similarly situated confidential employees. The total ongoing cost of this package, including the confidential's, is $1,824,259, assuming no salary increases under the CPI formula in the second year. The cost will not be fully realized until fiscal year 2011. The maximum additional cost under the CPI formula would be another $1,159,800. In fiscal year 2009, the cost of $728,525 is already included in the current budget. Facing budget shortfalls, I know this has been a concern, facing budget shortfalls in 2010, city staff have asked SEIU to resume negotiations in an effort to achieve a 5% unpaid furlough next year and other concessions to reduce the need for service cuts and layoffs in fiscal year 2010. While there's no guarantee, we are hopeful that such negotiations will be successful. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, any questions from anybody? Mr. Williams?
So I just wanted to make this clear, that this agreement for this coming year would be less than the existing budget, so it is actually a budget savings over the existing budget for this next fiscal year.
Is that correct, Ms. Schmidt?
That's true for the current fiscal year, the budget for next year isn't finalized yet.
Okay. Thank you, anybody else? Okay. Can we have a motion?
I'll move the introduction of the ordinance.
Second, then.
Okay. Motion is second, anybody? Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to preface my comments by saying, of course, like everyone on this council, I'm very concerned that all of our employees, and we have many good employees, that I'm very glad work for the city, that all of our employees are getting fair compensation for their work. At the same time, during the time that we discussed this measure, I was concerned about the amount of the increase. And since that time, the economic situation appears to me to have gotten considerably worse. Unemployment in the state right now is 9.4%, according to the latest figures I've heard. Locally, we've seen back-to-back, month-to-month, double-digit declines in some of our most important sources of revenue. And I believe that this is not the time to be granting increases, this is not the time to be establishing new holidays for public employees. And I want to reiterate, I deeply value the work that our employees do for all of us, for all the citizens. And at the same time, everyone in the city is going through, or if they aren't now, they will be soon, going through difficult economic times, and this is not the time to be talking about increases, this is the time to be being as frugal as we possibly can with the taxpayers' money and riding out this recession.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Williams?
Well, a couple, I think, things that are important. I think, first of all, the, this has represented a long, protracted negotiation between the city, whose interest obviously was to have some cost savings over the existing budget, and the union. I think that there has been a significant concessions made by the workers. I mean, I think that's shown in the fact that they were obviously asking for a lot more, and they accepted a lot less, and I think they did because they understood the level of the crisis and want to ensure that they can continue to provide good services to the people of the city, and they were not just interested in themselves. I feel that if Mr. Francisco had an issue with this, he should have brought it up earlier in the process. I feel like it's a late hit. I feel like it is a little bit of a grandstanding and opportunistic at this time. And I believe that as the city moves forward, in tough budget times, it takes us working together, and that there's plenty, been plenty of opportunities to address this before. And I believe that this is a good opportunity for us to make an agreement that saves us money in both this year and in the long run.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Williams, for your performance evaluation. Of course, we don't go into details about what we say during closed session in labor negotiations, I will only say that at many occasions, I have raised objections to some of the things that we have agreed to as a majority. And of course, I want to make it absolutely clear that Kristy Schmidt, our labor negotiator, proceeded with the majority's support of this council. There's no question in my mind about that, she did a fantastic job, she's a good negotiator, and she did what we, the council, asked her to. What I'm saying, and what I made absolutely clear during closed session, is that I do not agree with all of the things that we've decided on, and I think we will regret them. And I said exactly those words. So I'm not changing my position, and I fully agree that the council as a whole came to the position that you, Mr. Williams, support. And that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Okay, item number 11.
Public education research study for food scraps recovery and composting.
Okay, Mr. Samario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, Bob Samario, Assistant Finance Director, and pleased to be here to present to you a proposed funding for our food scraps recovery and composting study. Stephen McIntosh, the Environmental Service for Services Supervisor, will be doing most of the talking, he'll be talking about the details, but I just had a couple of comments. There has been a little bit of confusion as to what the sources of funds for this study are. First, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that this is going to be funded from and out of the solid... from and out of the solid waste fund, which is an enterprise fund. It's similar to our water, wastewater, downtown parking, golf, et cetera. And those funds, as you know, are not part of the general fund. They're separate, and they're funded from user fees to the customers. So water, for example, that operation's funded from water fees based on services provided. As you know, the general fund is experiencing some difficult challenges right now, but this does not have any bearing on the general fund. Enterprise funds on the whole are doing well, are doing okay, aren't really affected like the general fund is because they're not supported by tax revenues. It's really fees. The other part is that, just to make clear what the purpose of this study is, it's really not to determine the feasibility of a food scraps recovery program. It's really to, because that's really been in place for a while. We've been planning this all along, and it's planned to be effective or launch on July 1 this year in the business sector, so that's been the plans or in the works for a while. This study is really, is to help us identify and craft a message to those businesses in a way that addresses any real or perceived concern they might have about launching such a program. And it's an important program. We already have a pilot program underway. We have a lot of businesses who are just waiting in line to jump onboard, but we still know that there are a lot of concerns out there and misperceptions perhaps, and we want to make sure we know what those are. We want to talk to the business owners, but also all the way down to the folks who are preparing the food, understand what their issues may be, their concerns, so that when we start providing training programs or materials, education materials, even in our outreach, we know what those concerns are so we can best address them and resolve them. You know, our goal is to be successful in this program. It's a new, brand-new program, one of the few in the state or in the country, and we think it's important to make sure we do it right and so that we understand those concerns. And we think this is an important part of that process. So with that, unless there are any questions, I'd like to turn it over to Stephen McIntosh.
Okay, Mr. McIntosh.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, council. My name's Stephen McIntosh, again, the Environmental Services Supervisor. In the 2005 strategic plan, solid waste strategic plan that council approved going on four years ago, one of the key components or one of the key programs in that strategic plan was to initiate a food scrap recovery and composting program. In the solid waste action plan that council heard in March of last year of 2008, the action plan actually outlined the two top priorities for the city in terms of diversion, that being business recycling, traditional recyclables, bottles, cans, and newspapers, that sort of thing, and food scraps recovery in the business sector. It really is the lowest hanging fruit for us in the waste stream. There's approximately 30,000 tons of compostable paper and food, majority of that being food scraps. And also, on a larger scale or in a bigger context, it's the greatest potential for us to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Quickly putrescible, biodegradable products that get buried in a landfill do biodegrade in an anaerobic environment and emit carbon, excuse me, carbon dioxide equivalents of 72% or 72 times the standard carbon molecule, and that comes out in the form of methane. Landfills are the largest man-made source of methane releases to the atmosphere. The program's being done in several of jurisdictions on the West Coast, including San Francisco and Santa Monica. LA City has a pilot program going on like ours, but it's 8,000 customers versus our 12. It's being done in all of Alameda County and about 50 other programs throughout the United States on recovering food scraps, aimed at recovering food scraps. We're actually in very good standing with the state. The Waste Board's priority now, the CIWMB's priority, is to get organics out of the landfill. Their goal is 15 million tons by 2020. We have 11 years to get 15 million tons of material out of landfills, and their focus is, or their priority, is commercial composting. Back to the topic at hand, or this contract, the way we selected Idea Corps was initially sending out just an interest email to the CRA or California Resource Recovery Association listserv, that's several thousand members on that listserv, asking for responses to or an indication of whether or not a firm would be interested in responding to an RFQ. We received 12 responses to that initial email. We sent out the RFQ packet to those 12 and received six official responses to the RFQ, and we selected four firms to interview, for formal interviews. Staff selected Idea Corps based on a number of reasons or issues, but the most compelling really were a lot of their local campaigns that they developed for local businesses, their program launch capabilities, they were very unique in that regard, their attention to detail throughout this procurement process, and what they conveyed to us as the statistical level of confidence or the confidence levels that we'd be able to get with this data. Somewhere around 70% is what we've asked for, and they're telling us we can get 80% to 85% confidence levels, which is really quite good. The proposal itself includes interviews with the general business community, 10 to 15 of those, business community leaders, and then another 10 to 15 interviews with Latino business community leaders to figure out, find out what their concerns are with this program, to get some feedback from them, and help us design the program so that it works for them. Another major module is interviews with restaurant workers, chefs, cooks, all the way down to the busboy carrying out the trash at the end of the night. As we know with the recycling program, it only works if the people at the very end of the cycle are actually delivering the recyclables to the blue container out back. Same thing with food scraps. If we get the entire crew in a restaurant trained, if we understand what the thinking is of the entire crew up and down the restaurant staff force, we're going to do much better crafting a campaign and getting this program put together. And then an opinion survey of business, general business leaders and restaurant business leaders or restaurant owners and managers. That's 100 in that sample group, and then the non-restaurant owners or non-restaurant managers is another 100 interviews. So what we're hoping to get from this is very, very strong statistically significant information and data on the perspectives in the business community on food scraps recovery and composting. So why are we doing this? It really is relatively new in Santa Barbara. While we do have 12 participants in our pilot program, some large, City College and Cottage Hospital included, it's quite new for the rest of the community. And what we've found in talking to other jurisdictions, there are a lot of barriers or opinions or perspectives about food scraps that aren't necessarily positive, or there are just concerns about things such as public health. We want to make sure we develop a program and a campaign that addresses all of those concerns. We want to make sure we're out in front of it and we're dealing with problems before they arise. We really need to understand these issues, if they're real or perceived, and our outreach materials will zero in on these issues. We want to be proactive and responsive to the business community. Some public health issues were raised earlier in advance of this item coming to council, and I wanted to just address a couple of those real briefly. Food scraps are already in the trash cans that are out there throughout the city, and they are managed as solid waste, which is regulated by the Waste Board, the CIWMB. The pilot program's success with our 12 participants has been tremendous. We have not had any issues with vectors, but it's being run very well and very tightly. The food scraps actually will be, in a lot of cases, collected more frequently in smaller containers with lids that are fixed that will be closed. A lot of containers, as you know, throughout the city, if they're a larger container, don't always get closed. That's part of the problem with vector attraction. The Integrated Waste Management Board once again actively supports this. They want to see jurisdictions like Santa Barbara do food scraps collection in the composting sector, I mean, in the commercial sector, excuse me. And the Enforcement Division of the Waste Board, which actually carries out Title 14 of California State Law, is delegated, that LEA, Local Enforcement Agency Authority, is delegated to the county public health department. So it's the actual public entity, the local public entity that's enforcing the rules and regulations of the Waste Board, the Waste Board that's telling us to go do this. And as I said at the Downtown Organization meeting a couple of weeks ago, we are working closely with the LEA. We're dealing with all the public health issues or concerns that may and/or will arise, and we're going to make sure this program is tight and well-run. So if there's any questions at this point, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Are there questions? Mr. House and then Ms. Falcone.
I have comments.
You have comments? Okay. Ms. Falcone and then Mr. Horton.
Thank you. Stephen, thank you for that because I know that there had been at least one or two questions from restaurant owners as to how this program is going to interface with the county health permits that they have to have for their restaurants' operations. And what I heard you say, and if you allow me to translate a little bit of what you said in sort of code for folks, that the interface is ongoing, it's happening, you're working very closely with the county entity in order to make sure that not only the permit holder stays in compliance, but nothing that we do through this program is going to increase a public health hazard. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then next, the California Integrated Solid Waste Management Board, that's a state entity. That is an overarching solid waste board with members from all over the state that promulgate regulations that we, as local jurisdictions, have to follow. Just to be clear, people need to know where this particular oversight organization is housed, and it's a state entity.
Correct.
Okay. And they really want us to do, get all this material, organic material, out of the landfill because it, above all else, creates methane gas, which is a highly, highly toxic contributor to greenhouse gases. And so the more we can dispose of in either a composting way or some other organic way as opposed to degrading in a landfill will help the atmosphere. And so throughout the state of California, they're pushing jurisdictions to enter into these programs.
That's right.
As Chair of this committee for the last seven and a half years, I've learned, you know, trash queen here. And vectors. Vectors are basically, you're talking about rodents, mosquitoes, icky creepy things that tend to gravitate toward garbage. And there has been no increase, there has been no problem with rodents and other things that crawl around garbage cans through the pilot program, which has been going on for a year or so? How long's the pilot program been going on?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Falcone, the pilot program began in April of '07, so we're going on two years.
Oh, time flies, doesn't it?
On two years. And our very first participant in that program was Cottage Hospital.
Right.
And the Director of Food Services at that time told us, if we have a single fruit fly in our kitchen, it's over.
You shut it down.
The Ospod regulations for the hospital environment do not allow fruit flies or anything, for that matter. So we've been very successful in one of the most stringent regulatory environments in the city, so we're encouraged by that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that. I look forward to this program really getting up and running. And to be perfectly clear, this is just about the commercial sector. This is not going into people's homes and telling you have to scrape into a different can and use special bags and all of that sort of thing. That may be in the future, but that's not what this is all about right now, and it will not affect rates for the residential customers because it's not, hasn't got anything to do
That's right.
...with residential customers. So just to be clear.
Okay, Mr. Horton.
Stephen, I've had a few comments and questions as well, and could you clarify that what you want to have done by this contract is not something that your department would normally do and that you have folks actually doing this kind of work now, that you need to hire some outside help to do this and why that's necessary?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Horton, we feel strongly that we, while we have a lot of very talented recycling and solid waste management professionals in the Environmental Services Division, we do not possess the skills of creating statistically significant data or getting, gleaning information from the community in a statistically significant manner. We know that, again, food scraps, composting, recovery, there are a lot of attitudes and perceptions surrounding that, and it's a relatively complicated set of beliefs or attitudes. And for us to dig into it as staff, I think we could, but we wouldn't be very confident or we wouldn't have very high confidence levels because we really don't know how to do the statistical thing as professionals. But I also think we're a little too close to the forest. The outcome that we want from this contract, we want it to be objective and coming from a neutral third party, not staff who really has an interest in seeing this happen.
Okay, thank you. Mr. House, go ahead. Yeah, we might as well.
Sure. I see we're blending them all. That's great. I just want to say something to what you've just presented to us, and I just appreciate the approach. And I think on behalf of the broader community, to really know that you're being, I think, use the words, proactive and responsive, and I would add to that inclusive as well because if I look at the scope of those with whom you intend to have this consultant interact, you're going to be really covering the different, the full range of potential clients who would really be benefiting from this, not to mention all the others who have small businesses or residences that are actually in the area surrounding restaurants and others that would be using this system ultimately, who will benefit. Because quite honestly, and I've seen this myself, right near my wife's business and also near a place I'm going to be moving my store to, where you see those yellow cans that are out in the back now that you're using, I think that's indicative, that's the program we're talking about. And it is so different from just having that food scrap be mixed in with the general trash, which, you know, those lids get left open, they're not supposed to be, but it happens, somebody throws this and that in there. And to have these be so clean in such a completely different environment than just in mixed-in will make a huge difference to the environments around our restaurants and all over town. So I really want to commend you for using a listening approach because I think you're going to get some good input and suggestions back from the people who are actually using the system, and by doing that, it ensures its success. So I very much appreciate what you're doing, and I heartily support this.
Okay, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. McIntosh, several of us were present a few months ago at a presentation by county health to the Lodging and Restaurant Association. And judging by the email we got today and some of the questions I heard at that meeting, I think the real question from a lot of restaurant owners is they're concerned about storing what has been trash inside a food preparation area for a long period of time and possibly attracting pests. I mean, that's really what it boils down to. So could you just explain what the actual process is for dealing with the food scraps in restaurants?
Okay.
I'd be happy to. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, the state law, excuse me for one sec while I look this up, but it's Title 14, Chapter 3, Article 2, Section 17, 202. That's the California Integrated Waste Management Board's rule governing the handling of solid waste. Food scraps are treated as solid waste in California. They are currently put into containers in kitchens where all of the other waste material or trash goes. And at the end of the day, or several times throughout the day, as those fill up, they're taken out to the trash can out back or the trash dumpster out back. That material is not allowed by this Title 14. It's not allowed to stay inside the building as solid waste. The same applies to food scraps. It's not allowed to stay in the building when they're done with the operation or that day's meals have been served and they're closing up shop. It has to go out of the building. So the same rules apply in that the restaurant manager or their employees do have to take those carts out of the restaurant, take the bags out or take the material out, and not leave that indoors. That's required. What's even better, though, about the program that we're planning on launching in July is that the minimum health requirements for the state now is that state that food or garbage, trash, needs to be taken away once a week. That's minimum health standards for the state. We're going to be taking them, taking the food scraps away from businesses at least twice a week, so more than in a lot of cases now. So to answer your question, it's this specific code that the Waste Board has put in place, this specific regulation that governs both all solid waste and food, and it all just is simply required to be removed from the building at the end of the day.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
Well, first, I wanted to give you, you know, my results from my experiment in my backyard because even if you, even if we're not extending this to residential areas yet, some people still compost. And I took a couple articles that we have that are biodegradable containers that we use, put them half in the earth, you know, in my garden. The bagasse and PLA containers. use, put them half in the earth, you know, in my garden, the bag s and PLA containers, and half of them, a month later, I took them out, top half that was above the earth, fully intact, looks like it probably could still be used as a container tomorrow, and then the stuff that was underneath the earth, completely gone, no trace of it in the earth, nothing. Now, I don't know if I just have really active earthworms around my garden, but that's an example of that, that I think some people can do some more of this at home, too. And I also think that it's not just, though, you know, as if the greenhouse gas emission issue wasn't enough. I mean, this is a huge portion of the greenhouse gas emissions that this community contributes. We also just have the basic issue of the life of our landfill. Food waste constitutes 30% of the waste put going into the landfill. And remember, even though we have had tremendously successful recycling effort, what, now, 2/3 of our waste is diverted from the landfill, we still, and recycled, we still have not reduced the overall tonnage of waste going into the landfill. And if we are going to be successful in doing that, we have to tackle food waste. So that's my way of saying I completely agree with the staff report and the direction, especially since we only have to pay $9,000 worth of the price.
Okay. Ms. Schneider?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for your report and answering all the questions, and I move the staff recommendation.
Seconded then.
Okay. I just wanted to say, the one thing that we haven't talked about, it has all those good issues. I mean, it's just a very good thing to do, but we haven't talked about using the compost later, which is a wonderful thing, because then you don't have to use all those pesticides and chemicals. So I think that's, you know, that's a very good lesson for the kids. The people at Harding School, I know, are very happy with their composting, and the kids really understand that about the food waste in their cafeteria, going into composting, and then raising more vegetables. It's just, it's very wonderful. So I think this is a win-win situation all around. I'm so glad that the, it's Sojourner, and is there another restaurant? I'm sorry, it's going on in my head.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, it's Aldo's, the other restaurant.
Thank you, Aldo's, of course. Good food, too. Those restaurants, I'm so glad they're doing very well with it, because I think that was kind of a test, that was a test case for us, and they're doing very well with it. So it's good. So I'm looking forward to this program. So we have a motion and a second. Anybody else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you so much. Thanks for doing all this work. I know it's been a lot of work. Okay. Item number 12. Closed session for a conference with real property negotiator. Okay. And we will report out of there, we will adjourn out of there, I'm sorry, instead of reporting out. I saw the city attorney going, whoops. So thank you very much. Talk to you later.